Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's a meeting of the regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County. Today is Tuesday, June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's nine AM. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justin Center at twelve hundred West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. Today, we have with us Mr. Pastor Lowell Urquhart-Bach with the Hope Community Church to give us the invocation. So Lowell's my friend, so I refer to him as Lowell, but he is a pastor.
Please bow your heads. Father, I just thank you, Lord, that we can come together, Lord, to work out the business that you have ordained, Lord, because you have ordained our family. You have ordained the church, but you have also ordained government, Lord. And we just ask today, Lord, that there be unity throughout our government, Lord, right here, starting right here in Hood County, that we see unity. And the spirit of offense that has affected our country will not, will not rise up here in Hood County, Lord. Lord, I ask that you help us all to have clear vision, and we should seek truth in all we do, Lord, and not truth that is founded on our emotions and our feelings, Lord, and, and our past experiences, Lord, but the truth that is only found in the Word of God, and we ask that in the name of Jesus today. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. I want to remind everybody that this is the first Commissioners' Court meeting, and as such, we have the open mic, so that if anybody wishes to talk about any subject, as long as it refers to county business, you're free to do so by filling out a public participation form, handing it to Sheriff Deeds, who in turn will hand it to the county clerk, who will then mark it and get you in line, and then present it up here, and your name will be called at the appropriate time. So please do not forget to do that, because if you do, and it starts, you will not be called. Okay, so today, we have some special presentations. So Ms. Melissa Welburn, would you tell us the first one?
Yes, good morning. This morning, we're going to present the Hood County 4-H year-end summary.
Oh, how are you doing?
I'm trouble.
How are you doing?
Good morning, and how are y'all? Okay, so we have finished our 4-H year. We usually go from school year, so the school season's out. So I was here to give you a little bit of information about how this year went in the spring season. So first off, we ended all our major show season. We went to all the major shows, Houston, Fort Worth, San Antonio, San Angelo. We had about fifteen kids go to all those stock shows, and they did very, very well. You saw the growth in them at every stock show, and it was so encouraging to watch. The next thing, we had about twelve youth compete at our district roundup, which is, contains a public speaking, educational presentations, vocal, all those things, and they all placed at our district roundup. So all these youth improved at county, they went to district, and a lot of them went on to our state roundup, which was last week. We went to College Station. We had about seven youth we took, and they all did a phenomenal, phenomenal job. First, we did a variety of contests. We did entomology, livestock skelethon, public speaking, horse judging. We did it all. So we have some results with us. First, I have Kelly Sanders. She placed seventh in livestock skelethon and fifth in promote 4-H. We have Kami Powers. She was fourth in horse judging and fifth in public speaking. Grace Burdick was eighth in safety and prevention. And then we had Anna Felty, that she was ninth in health and wellness, public education presentations. So we are very proud of these kids. We had multiple kids that did a great job, that did not place, but we're so proud of them. Now that our spring season is over, Hannah and I are off to do summer camps. We have a lot of summer camps. Hannah's doing food and sewing camp for a lot of young 4-Hers. And then I have fishing camp actually coming up in July. So we're gonna have a lot of fun with that. And to finish my stuff, I have Kami Powers with me today, and she is going to give a short presentation about her 4-H year.
Good morning.
Morning, gentlemen. My name is Kami Powers, and I've been a member of Hood County 4-H since two thousand and sixteen. Naturally, over those years, I've continued to develop as a leader and as a person, but I attribute most of that development to 4-H. The responsibility, self-worth, and dedication have stuck with me from day one. Throughout my career in 4-H, I've participated in projects like horse, public speaking, and vet science. And last week, I had the privilege of showcasing what I've learned at state 4-H roundup. I competed in the horse judging and public speaking contests, placing in the top five in the state in both. This year, my public speaking topic involved an agricultural policy that would affect the ability of farmers and ranchers to practice animal husbandry, which would be detrimental to both the rural way of life and the economy as a whole. This topic has allowed me to showcase my passion and advocate for agriculture all over the state, but especially in front of my audience at roundup. However, without your support, none of this would be possible. I want to thank each and every one of you for your contribution and the opportunities that you have given both myself and other 4-Hers as a direct result. We continue to appreciate you on our journey to make the best better. Thank you.
Very good, okay. The second presentation then is for the badges for blood drive. Do we have anybody here for that? Lookie here, okay. I think I know some of these ladies here. How are y'all this morning?
Good, how are you?
Would y'all tell us what you have here? Introduce yourselves first.
Hi, I am Debbie Grover with Carter Blood Care.
And I'm Shay Pendleton with Hood County Youth Services.
And I want to thank y'all for having me today. I am here because we do an annual, the Hood County Youth Services does an annual blood drive. It's called the Battle of the Badges. And Shay and her group, I mean, they do a phenomenal job of getting this together. We do this once a year. And this, so far, the last, since two thousand and twenty, they have, we have collected two hundred and fifty-nine pints of blood through Hood County Youth Services Battle of the Badges, which is amazing, because that can help up to seven hundred and seventy-seven patients in need, which happens to be my lucky number, so that is just amazing. And I don't know if y'all know, but Carter Blood Care needs eleven hundred units of blood a day, just to keep the hospitals in the supply that they need. So these blood drives that they do, that they host once a year, is just simply amazing for the patients. The community, Hood County, Granbury, comes out in full force to donate blood all over. So that's just, it's so appreciative, and the patients in need, just, we can't say any more than that, so. But we have a friendly competition between the fire department, police department, and sheriff's office. And the last two years, the sheriff's department has won the, they do a vote every time, you know, somebody comes in, they do a vote on who they're donating for, sheriff, fire, or police department. And this year, happens to go to the fire department. And this last blood drive, we collected eighty-three units, which helped up to two hundred and forty-nine patients in need. So that is absolutely amazing. And Shay has already got her blood drive scheduled for next year, so.
Well, good deal. Well, let's get along.
So hi, I'm Debbie Carter. Here too. Nice to meet you. Thank you so much for your service, and here is your traveling trophy.
Thank you very much. This is a very worthwhile project. We do have a couple of fire guys, if they wanted to get included in the picture. Are there some fire guys here? Come on up, fire guys. Firefighters.
Been there, fireman.
Firefighters. There you go. That's good.
Got one more coming behind you.
Good deal.
Thank you.
That's a good project.
Thank you.
Good work, all of you. Thank you very much. Okay, no service awards?
No, sir.
Okay, so now this brings us to the citizens' comments at large. I don't have any up here, there are none. Okay, so now we go to the consent agenda. Does any of the Commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No.
Do I hear appropriate motion then?
Judge, y'all make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve, to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Don Lenny, I understand you have no, nothing on road ops today. Okay, so that brings up Mr. Clint Head in Development.
Morning, Judge, morning Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
First item, we have developments accepted, applications for three replats. I'm gonna put all these three together to save some time. It's for the traditions of Port Ridgely in precinct three, the con plantation unit eight, lot eight eighty-seven R in precinct two, Deer Valley Estates, tracks fifteen R one and fifteen R two in precinct one. Development recommends setting the public hearing for these replats for the July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, Commissioners' Court.
I move that we set the public hearing for the following replats, the tradition at Port Ridgely, the con plantation unit eight, lot eight eighty-seven R, and Deer Valley Estates, track fifteen R one and fifteen R two.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to set the three plots for July the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-two, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay.
Next item we have is a final plat of Queen J addition, lots one through six in block one and precinct one, to discuss and consider. The property is located at ninety-three fifty-one Colony Road in Toler, Texas. This final plat is located in a rural district in precinct one, and be creating six two-point-one-six acres lots out of the J Howard survey abstract two twenty-two. These lots will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. There is no streets proposed to be constructed with this final plat. The lots will access on the existing county-maintained Colony Road. There's an existing stock pond on the property to meet the fire protection requirement, and many, and there are many surrounding the property. Staff has reviewed this final plat, and at the time the agenda was presented, and this morning, none of the comments have been addressed. Staff recommends denying this final plat for not complying with the development permit regulations and addressing the comments, which would have, be the list to be given by statute for the denial.
So what does that mean? Do I hear a motion, or are y'all recommending it?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to deny the final plat of Queen J addition, lots one through six, block one.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to deny the final plat of the Queen J addition, lots one through six, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously five zero. Okay, next?
Next, we have a final plat of Mulligan's addition, lot one, block one. It's in precinct three. This property is located at sixty-twenty-one East US Highway three seventy-seven. This final plat is located in the road corridor district in precinct three, and will be creating a five-point-zero-zero-eight acres tract out of the J Howard, John Howard survey abstract seven seventeen, known as lot one, block one. It'll be served by onsite sewage facilities, and will be served by well or septic, or well or city of Granbury Water. It is in the City of Granbury Certificate of Convenienceity, or the C C N, but is not in the City of Granbury C limits. There are no streets proposed with the, to be constructed with this final plat. The lot will access on the existing US Highway three seventy-seven. Staff has reviewed this final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
I hear a motion.
I move that we approve the final plat for Mulligan's addition, lot one, block one.
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to final plat of Mulligan's addition, lot one, block one, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Next, we have a public hearing to discuss the variance request for eighteen sixty-two ranch in precinct one to section two subdivision regulation, section eight point five.
Okay, at this time at nine sixteen, we are convening into a public hearing.
In section eight point five for developments without central water systems or consisting of five or more dwelling units, it allows for lake or pond access. In the case that this subdivision is designing a pond to meet the requirements and is requesting this variance to allow sufficient stormwater for drainage area based on the evaporation, vapor transpiration, transpiration study to refill the pond rather than through operation of a well. Staff and the county's engineer have no problem with this request. It's just, it just has to have variance from the court, because it was something that was never considered before, and is not an option given in the regulations. So we're trying to allow the drainage from the borrowed ditches to, as an option to refill the pond for, and kind of offset the well.
So are you recommending, your department recommend?
Staff has no objection to, and the county engineer has no objection to the variance.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Or further discuss questions? Oh, yeah, I guess we are. No comments? Okay, we are now convening back into the Commissioners' Court at nine eighteen. So.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the variance for eighteen sixty-two ranch to section two subdivision regulation, section eight point five.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the variance for eighteen sixty-two ranch, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the variance, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next?
Next, we have the site development plan for Circle B RV Park in precinct one, continued from the May twenty-fourth, Commissioners' Court, to discuss and consider. Do you need me to go back through everything from the May twenty-fourth presentation?
Okay, first thing, is, is Matt Mills here? I saw him come in. Does he have a hearing there? Would you please, Sheriff, I'd like for him to start on this thing. He said the last time that he didn't have enough time to look at it, so we got, we got a, I guess we might as well, I'd like for him to state what the law is and what he found out, because he's talked to the lawyers, talked to lawyers on this thing, which is what I wanted to do, so. What do we give, thirty minutes aside on that? Well, we got five against, so, and, and then one. We got five minutes, and he can, well, it's supposed to be thirty minutes, so it's, it's fifteen, fifteen, four against, and fifteen, so you got thirty minutes. You see, it's thirty minutes total.
Yes.
Divided between four and a half, so against gets fifteen minutes, and four gets fifteen minutes. Okay. Slipped in, Your Honor. Mr. Mills.
Slipped in the back row.
I need you to come up here, you know? You said the last time, this concerns the, the Circle B RV park. You didn't have enough time the last time. I understand that other attorneys have contacted you down from the Dunn family.
This is a mess. This is a real moving target, because a few months ago, the question was about setbacks for RV parks, so we dealt with the setbacks. And then three weeks ago, most of what I heard that seemed most relevant was about the width of the road. And then I get a letter, which I only was able to read last night, from council for the neighbors, and it deals with an assortment of things, none of which are roads. It's like landscaping, and notice requirements, and drainage, and water, and that kind of thing. So, I mean, what, I'm starting to wonder what I'm supposed to look at. I've spent quite a bit of time on this in the last three weeks. In fact, I went to the site myself, and met with the Duns, and looked at the property and all that stuff. I don't know how many of y'all have been able to do that, too, but let me just, if you wanted to try to get a brief synopsis of some of this stuff, there was a call from this Jessica Mendoza yesterday with Clint, and I was just mostly listening. It was a Zoom meeting call, and the, the thing that's the most problematic really for the county, there's been stuff that was written years ago in these regs that we have traditionally not enforced, and that's just the bottom line. And so are we gonna hold Mr. Burrow to a standard that we haven't been holding other RV park developers to for the last decade or so, even though they're in the regs? So I mean, the lawyer and the neighbors can look at the regs and say, well, you haven't done this, and this, and this. But Clint's position is, well, we haven't been doing that for the last ten, twelve years, even before Clint became development director. So I mean, it's not gonna be a flattering look for us either way on some of these points. Some of this stuff, I would say, if you look at local government code two thirty-one point two-two-three, we have authority specific to Hood County to regulate certain things, and there's eight things listed. Some of them are pretty relevant to this, but one of them, for instance, is there's no landscaping in there. So I mean, the landscaping stuff is in our regs, but we don't have the specific authority in the local government code to regulate landscaping. So the attorney for the Duns and the neighbors is saying, where's the landscaping study? You haven't put that in there, et cetera, but I don't know under local government code that we can. So the other thing, I'm just kind of hitting various points here, that there was a notice requirement under the regs where it's in four point four, and, let me get to it, D, D three, and it says, notice of the hearing shall be posted on the property to be developed in accordance with county rules. So apparently, we haven't been doing that. That's like a physical sign of some sort on the property, saying this is the proposal. In reality, I would say, as a practical matter, now that we've been delayed three weeks, there's been considerable notice to the community. As a practical matter, they've gotten as much or more notice than if you were to put up a physical sign there a month ago or so. And if you defeat for today and say, hey, you need to post notice, physical sign on the property, then he can just post a physical sign on the property and come back in two weeks or a month, and here we are again. So at the end of all that, I would say that the best thing probably to hang your hat on, if, if you didn't think it was appropriate to put it in, would be kind of this catch-all in, in six point one-one about, and it lists a variety of things about location of RV parks, and it says, shall not be permitted in any area found unsuitable for development because of poor or undesirable drainage, physical topography, soil characteristics, public access, or other features that may be harmful to the public health, safety, and general welfare. No entrance or exit from a RV park shall be permitted through a residential district, nor require movement of traffic from the park through residential zone. So I don't think some of those are a problem, but, you know, the public access is not as desirable as most RV parks, if not all, that I've seen in the county. Winding through a fairly narrow road through a pretty residential neighborhood is not as desirable as, as the ones I can think of that I've seen around town. So, I mean, that's not real concrete. That's kind of a touchy-feely, if you want, just, that's not as desirable, and that's what's in the regs. And I, I mean, I think that would be the most substantive thing you could hang your hat on, from what I've read, but one way or the other, when this is all said and done, we need to revise our regs and narrow it down to things that are really enforceable that we want to enforce and be consistent with, because none of this has made us look real good. So anyway, that's kind of my quick summary. Any questions?
Yeah, a lot of questions. We don't have a clear-cut road to follow here on what is your recommendation? Does a county even have the right to designate a residential district?
Oh, that, okay, so we, this is in the Rural Development District, is that what it's called? This is in the Rural Development District, so there's three districts that are defined in our regs. There's the Water Quality District, there's the Road Corridor District, and the Rural District, which that's what this is. So, yeah, it says residential zone, residential district, and there are, I counted about fifteen houses on the road in some fashion, if you drive back to the end of the street. To me, it kind of feels residential, but it's, that's never defined anywhere. The only definition is that this is in the Rural Development District. So I'm trying not to have a real strong, you know, do it or not do it. We're gonna probably end up in court either way.
Something strong from him. I'd like to have something from you strong.
I've tried to give, you know, a recitation of what I'm reading is the law, and then y'all do what you want, based on what I think would be the only area to really hang your hat on going forward, was what I just read in the six point one-one location paragraph, but I don't think the road thing is, after quite a bit of review, I don't think that that's a grounds to deny on, based on the other, the sizes of all of our county roads. I mean, none of our county roads have twenty-eight feet of usable roadway, and yet that's in the regs, and nobody's abiding by that. And there's a provision in the local government code where we're not supposed to impose greater road conditions than what we have elsewhere. So I don't think the road thing is gonna get you anywhere, but you could say it's under this catch-all of public access under location paragraph. You know, it doesn't have the twenty-eight feet of usable roadway, but is the public access poor for public health, safety, general welfare? I mean, this is a hard, hard topic.
Well, I know, but we've got, we've got people's legal rights here. We've got people that their legal rights are gonna be severely affected if we don't deny it. And then if they do deny it, then we have other legal rights that are severely affected. I mean, we're talking about legal rights, and we want to do the legal thing, the right thing.
Right.
And so how are we gonna do the legal thing? That's, you know, I always said, you know, sometimes doing the legal thing is not maybe the morally right or just thing to do, but that's not what we're up here to try to do, and maybe it's not even for this Commissioners' Court to do. Maybe it's the district court or the county court at law to hear sworn testimony under oath, and have legal briefs submitted, and let somebody that's real versed in the law to fit out all these contingencies. I mean, I don't want to make a wrong decision up here, because it's really adverses either the people that are living near's rights or Mr. Burrow's rights. I mean, that's just not to say something we can hang our hat on. We want to try to make the correct legal decision, so.
Right, I mean, basically, what it boils down to is, if you side with the neighbors, you're siding with the letter of the rules that we've had posted for a long time. And if you side with Mr. Burrow, you're siding with the precedent that we've actually applied to every other RV park for the last decade. So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of, if I could boil it down to a nutshell, that's where we are, I think.
The bad thing about it is that it's really not any way that these parties can come together. It's either approve or disapprove, right? I mean, there's no real settlement that we can come up here, other than we've got to make a decision one way or another. What about, isn't it the, what is it on deciding boundaries like that? Would be the District Court or the County Court at Law, or do they have concurrent jurisdictions?
Yeah, go ahead. You may know that better than I do, actually. It'd probably be District, right?
You talking about the residential district boundaries?
Well, that would decide this. You know, trespass the title actually is usually the District Court is what I'm thinking, but here in Hood County, they have concurrent jurisdiction, so I don't know. But I'm just saying that, you know, we're listening to people, and, uh, this is not all under oath, and we maybe need to take it under oath and have legal briefs and have it in the system where they can actually appeal even from that decision.
If you're talking about changing like the district boundaries for like the residential district, we'd have to create a residential district. And to do that, we would have to change our resident, our district boundary map, our regulations. To do that, we'd have to have a public hearing, according to 231.226, uh, Local Government Code, Subchapter K, Development Regulations in Hood County. Development Regulation or Procedure Governing Adopting Regulations and District Boundaries. A development regulation adopted under this subchapter is not effective until it is adopted by the Commissioners Court after a public hearing. Before the 15th day, before the date of the public hearing, the Commissioners Court must publish a notice of the public hearing in a newspaper. A general regulation of the county, the Commissioners Court may establish or amend development regulation only by an order passed by the majority vote, full membership of the court.
That's what it takes to get a residential district?
And it would cut a chunk into one of the other districts. You can't have overlapping districts. You'd have to create a fourth district.
So, here, here's the problem that I see with that. We have it in our regs. We've got those words in our regs. If you look at page 65 at the last paragraph, it says, "No entrance or exit from a recreational vehicle park shall be permitted through a residential..." Actually, we use two different terms, by the way. Residential zone and residential district. And we need to, excuse me, we need to consider that, okay, maybe this hasn't been enforced. You haven't given me any examples where a residential or an RV park has been approved that's entrance and exit through a residential district. But even if there is arguendo, doesn't mean that now that it's being challenged, that we say, "Well, we've done it before, and I have, still haven't heard of an example." I think we've got to clean these regs up.
They definitely got to be cleaned up.
And as long as the regs say what they say, I think the people have a right to rely on those. And we are in a real quandary, Judge. I agree with you, and maybe a deck action, I don't know. I think it would probably be District Court. But, but, uh, you know, the rights of the parties need to be determined, and we, our regs say what they say.
They definitely got to be cleaned up. My best guess is that was copied from a city ordinance and stuck in there, because the, that whole thing, there's no definition, no defined, no adopted district that is a residential district in Hood County. The court has not adopted one. To me, those are, that's dead language. And there's another section in there that says, "If any portion of this regulation is found not to be valid, then it does not invalidate the rest of the regs." So, that's just a portion of the regs that never meant nothing, because there's not a existing district that's mapped, adopted, or defined in these regs. So, we've never, you know, if you can't place it, then you can't enforce it.
So, you're saying there's not a residential district?
It's not mapped or defined, not adopted.
But it's in our regs.
Yeah.
So, who, so where does the burden on interpretation fall on that? See, that's the point here. Do we, do we leave the status quo where it is until we figure out where we should be? Or do we make a decision right now and upset the status quo? I mean, I'm just throwing stuff on the table here.
I'm not an attorney, but I don't know if there is any interpretation, if it tells you, you have to, the court had to adopt it, and we have to define it and set the boundaries of it. If there's no boundaries of it set, how can it exist?
So, you're saying you don't have it violating a residential district, because there's none designated there, correct? Is that your interpretation?
Right. And, you know, what is the status quo? I mean, is the status quo the letter of the regs or what we've been doing for the last 10, 15, 20 years?
Good question. But like I say, I haven't heard one example where we have waived the part about the residential district, having the ingress and egress on that side of it.
Right. I can't rattle off all the RV parks. I mean, most of them are pretty much on highways. There's one, I think, off Williamson Road that, I don't know if that's the most similar to this, maybe?
But we don't know right now.
I haven't surveyed every RV park and compared.
Well, I think that, you know, this is, the territory judgment actually took it straight this out up here. My mother does think this report goes, but this is kind of in the air of trespass the private title actually. Of the legal title. So, it'd probably be in District Court with Judge Bufkin judging it.
I would, I would think so, but I mean, obviously, y'all still going to have to vote on this, one way or the other.
Well, you, you know, as you said, we've got a dilemma here from the last court. What I remember, if we do not deny this, it automatically gets approved. And that's what it comes down to. We can either approve it or deny it, but if we, if we don't deny it, then it's automatically approved, is what I heard. Is that?
If you deny it, you've got to state the reasons. It can't be arbitrary.
It can't be arbitrary. We have to quote the reason that we're going to deny it. And if we don't deny it, we don't have to approve it. It will be approved if we don't deny it. So, my point is, how can we take this to District Court? We can't table it.
Well, we don't. We, we're not the ones taking it to District Court. Y'all just vote one way or the other today, and then whoever the aggrieved party is that basically loses this vote by y'all, then they're the ones who would take it to District Court.
Okay.
Well, we're up here asked to do something that if we don't have a legal standard, we're not going to be following the law either way, because, um, I just hate making a decision on something like this where there is no residential district.
Problem is, we're going to make a decision today. Is that correct?
You've already put it off once for three weeks, so, I mean, I think we need to fish or cut bait, and then the parties hash it out from there, would be my thought.
Okay. Do we get a recommendation from our development?
Yeah.
Also put him on the hook too. I mean, you know?
Yeah, and then we're going to see how, and we're going to get a second from Mr. Mills on this thing.
What do you want a recommendation on?
Your recommendation whether we should approve or not, based on what you know and the regulations that you deal with. And I'm not, not going to hold you to anything other than what you...
All the comments have been addressed.
Okay.
Staff has no other comments. I mean, he's done everything that staff has asked him to do. That's the only thing I can recommend.
Mr. Mills, if he's done everything he's supposed to do in the state of these regs, then it's not anybody's fault. It's not Mr. Burrow's fault, and it's certainly not the neighbor's fault either. They're just, they're just in a situation here that it's going to have to get cleaned up. And like you said, whoever loses here is going to have to, I guess, file for an injunction. That's what it would really...
Right.
...take, file for an injunction, and then get enough time so that you could go ahead and make a decision. So, this is not going to be, whatever we decide to do up here, is not going to be the last definitive action regarding these people's rights. I'm saying both sides. So...
Right.
It would be decided in a courtroom. It may even, could go all the way up to the Supreme Court, actually, I guess. Um, do I hear a motion?
Hell, do we need to listen to the comments?
Yeah, yeah, let me, we've got all these comments up here. Everybody's going to get five minutes. We got six comments up here at 30 minutes for slides. We got, we got six. So, Mr. Ryan Dunn, you're up first.
My time starts to have some handouts, if that's okay. Is that all right?
Well, I did, you're going to have to speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you.
Sorry. I have a couple of handouts for my time starts, if I can hand them out, handouts.
That's the ones we got by email?
Well, there's one more piece of paper in here. It's a petition signed by 46 residents of the WD subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, while the sheriff is handing that out, go ahead and say what you're going to say.
Thank you, Sheriff. Um, good morning. Thank you. Again, my name's Ryan Dunn, and, um, we are a part of a small residential area trying to prevent this RV park going in. And I just kind of wanted to read a little bit of the letter of the overview, that we have substantially been aggrieved by the failure to comply with the Hood County Developments and Compliance Rules and Regulations, Section 1 Development Permit Regulations. Ms. Dunn and her neighbors are not provided notice with the Circle B RV Park application for the site development plan as required by Development Regulations. Moreover, because the application for the Circle B RV Park fails to comply with the applicable application requirements outlined in Section 4.4 and 6.1, the development of the regulations, Ms. Dunn has not been provided, thank you, the opportunity to review the information necessary to determine if her property, including ground, her groundwater, will be adversely affected by proposed RV park. Us and the neighbors utilize private water wells improperly for their private water consumption needs. We respectfully request the site development plan application submitted for the Circle RV Park be denied by the Commissioners on June 14th, 2022, Commissioners Court meeting. Failure to comply with the application requirements, alternatively, excuse me, Ms. Dunn respectfully requests the application be remanded in Development Department until such time as completed. Application is submitted in accordance to the section of 4.4D.1 in Development Regulations. Development shall conduct a technical review of this application, and in the notice of any subsequent hearing and provided in accordance to the Section 4.4.D.3 of the Regulation, notice of hearing shall be posted on the property to be developed in accordance to the county rules. So, some applicable authority. Texas government called the legislature authorized Hood County to adopt development regulations in accordance with the Section 231.221 of the Local Government Code Development Regulations of Hood County. The development regulations adopted under this subsequent subsection are applicable in unincorporated areas of Hood County. And again, that's going to be in the Local Government Code 231.22. The legislation is specific that any development regulations adopted must be adopted in accordance to the following procedure. A development regulation under this subchapter is not affected, adopted by the Commissioners Court after a public hearing before the 15th day. The hearing of the Commissioners Court must publish notice of the hearing in a newspaper in general circulation in the county. And B, the Commissioners Court may establish and amend and develop regulations only by order passed by the majority vote and full membership of the court. The Court Development Department has no direction or authority to amend, vary, and/or waive the development regulations adopted in accordance with the specific procedures without providing notice such amendment. Now, I'm going to skip to the conclusion. We heard Mr. Mills say a lot of this stuff already, and it's in the note that's been given to you as well. So, I just want to shift to our argument. Counsel for Ms. Dunn has reviewed the site development plan and application submitted by the Circle RB, RV Park, and discovered that the application is materially incomplete. None of the information described in the previous section and required to be submitted on the site development plan was in fact submitted with application. The only subsequent information, including an application of a hand-drawn sketch of proposed development and a plat showing a proposed wastewater system stamped by a registered professional sanitarian, no other substantive information required by the Section 4.4 or 6.11 Development of Regulation was included, excuse me, in this application. I'm trying to read fast. Ms. Dunn and the neighbors are unable to determine whether that we will be aggrieved by the approval of the site development plan for the Circle B RV Park, because the application contains none of the relevant information. Ms. Dunn is unable to determine whether the proposed water system for the RV park was adversely impact her and her family's use of the personal water well, increased use, because the application contains no information about the proposed water system. She is unable to determine the proposed method of drainage will adversely impact the property because the information was not emitted from the property, sorry, the property, because the information was emitted from the application. She also is unable to intern the buffering setbacks landscaping that will prevent erosion of her property because of the development regulations requiring information relevant to determination regarding erosion and submitted to the application, none of what is. Gentlemen, there's a 19 seconds for me left. I'm a father, I'm a rancher in a residential area that does not want an RV park in their backyard. I've bested my whole life in Hood County, and I appreciate y'all's attention to this matter, but I'm a voting resident, and these 46 people are also. Thank you.
Okay, next is Elizabeth Mercer.
So, you've, we've all heard the legal arguments, and I understand the position that you're all in. I'm going to touch on the philosophical arguments that I've, I've been told. I've heard over and over again about personal property rights, and I am an advocate of that, because I have property. I've heard about the constitutional rights. There isn't a constitutional impact here. The reason for that is because from the southern border to the very tip of the panhandle, there are prohibitions on personal property. As Texans, we want them to be as small as possible, but they exist. We have regulations. The fact that the county has neglected to enforce those is simply not my problem. I don't mean to be cruel, but they are not my problem. You should have always been enforcing them. I have to go by the rules out there. I expect everyone else to. The other thing that I, I wonder if you all have really thought about is the message this sends to the county at large as you develop it, because right now, it's impacting the WD area, but there isn't going to end there. Tolar is growing. Everywhere is growing. If you don't have regulations, or if you refuse to enforce the regulations that you have, then every county resident here who lives semi-rural or rural as we do, they're going to understand their community is at risk, because the most important thing apparently is if someone with a ranch has a back 40 and they want to develop it commercially, we have no voice. We have no rights. We have no ability to have life, liberty, or the pursuit of happiness, because we are not as important as the individuals who decide to commercially develop in what is a residential area. We are not, I, I understand we're not zoned as such. I'm not even asking you to do that. We're a community. We vote. We shop in Hood County. We support this community. It isn't unreasonable to ask that we have that support as well, and it won't be unreasonable as other people in the county start seeing their homes destroyed, their property values destroyed, and their lives disrupted by this type of development. The other thing I want to let you know is that I actually had a conversation with Mr. Burrow. Eric Burrow was cordial. It was not a, it wasn't any kind of a combative conversation, and he assured me that he is not going to put destitute people out there, that apparently this is not indeed going to be an attempt to smudge the housing shortage, and that he's going to vet everyone who goes in there. And I wish him great success at that vetting, because if he makes a mistake, it's going to be us who suffer. We are going to be the ones who suffer property damage. We are going to be the ones who deal with traffic on a road that is substandard by any, the county itself has said that. So, I'm not for this RV park, because at this location, it's just silly. So I'm not for this RV park because at this location, it's just silly. The other thing that I think you, I hope you all understand as you vote today, is it not just a message to all of us, it is a message to every single rural or semi-rural resident in Hood County. We are valuable, we matter, we have rights as well. Because if you vote to put this in, then what you have, the message you have sent to all of us is that we are betrayed. Just that simple. Our rights are betrayed. That's what's happening here. One family against all these other families. And this is not a negative thing to Mr. Burrow. I understand he doesn't agree with this position. Unfortunately for all of you, you get to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Kibberly Collins.
I have something to say about all these regulations y'all are letting slide. I don't get away with those. I'm, I'm the one that gets called on the septic systems. I guess I'm going to be putting me in one of those regular ones so I don't have to pay that aerobic guy anymore. I've already put in two, this is my second aerobic septic system. But hey, it's just money, I'll put in one of those regular ones. So I don't have to pay that inspector anymore. Or do I even have to bother doing that anymore since we let those, those regulations slide? You know? What, what's the point of them if we don't have to enforce them for, you know, the last ten or fifteen years? I mean, I'm at ten, fifteen miles from the lake, I'm not going to be polluting it with three people on my property. Three people don't use that much space and we've got a two ta, two-tank septic system out there that barely sprays every couple of days. Fifty-eight hundred dollars for a septic system, ninety-five hundred in taxes every year. And we're not residential. My property gets compared with De Cordova Bend when I go up there and I do a comp with Mr. Etherly because he can't find another house that compares to mine. So he compares me to a residential property when I go up there and I need a comp because I can't find anyone either. I'm just frustrated with this county right now. And so I'm going to have to put up with an RV park right down the street from my house. Would you want one of those right next to you? Worrying about the facility draining down on your property? And the well, every pond next to our property is dry. So you do worry about your well running dry. You don't have no water facilities, you don't have no internet out there. It's, it's not the same thing as living in the city when you live out in Lepan. You know this. So think about this when you do the, do your voting there. I don't need the other two minutes and fifty-three seconds. I'm, I believe Mr. Dunn did a really good job of doing his thing. I tried a garden out there, I've tried peach tree orchards out there. It's really hard to keep everything going. I'm done.
Roger Gaines.
Good morning, gentlemen, how are y'all? This RV park is being put in and y'all are sitting here with a problem. You've got regs that have not been supported in the last ten or fifteen years, yet you've got one coming in and you're trying to figure out how to handle the situation. Grandfather, your, your existing RV parks start representing and supporting your regs today. That solves y'all's problem, gets y'all out of a problem that apparently is going to be ongoing until some regs are, for lack of a better word, revamped. This RV park sitting out there, we have no attractions to bring in travelers. So what's the RV park supposed to be? It's going to end up being a trailer park. Now, there's regulations that say you have to move them every so many days. They can get by with that, just moving from one space to another. They've lived up to those laws. But in all reality, what are you bringing in there? I mean, we don't have Six Flags down the road for people to stay at our RV park. So I think if you, grandfather, what's there? All the RV parks that are in place now and start enforcing your regulations today, you've solved your problem. That's all I have. Thank you. I don't want the RV park.
Ms. Dunn.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge, thank you Commissioners for the time to speak. Thank you for extending the time to vote. As mentioned, it was kind of a sliding scale and it will continue to be as we find more information out with our attorneys. We, we hired them a week ago, so this is just scratching the surface. Thank you for those who came out and looked at our place and spent the time to care about this issue with us. Thank you, Mr. Eagle, for, for spending the time to talk to us and hear our concerns and walk around and physically see the place and to look into the rules and regulations with us. In my opinion, we don't need to change these regs. They're bare minimum for an RV park. Don't, don't get rid of them, enforce them, grandfather them in, the ones that are already there like they said, and there is no other RV park in your county that goes through a neighborhood. There shouldn't be. These rules should be strict. You should protect us and your, your community. As you can see from our petition, there are nearly fifty homeowners and that number is growing. I can get more. I can, I can go to more houses and knock on more doors and have more meetings. I can show you that the community, this is from our subdivision. We don't want this. We need your protection. I'm here not only representing myself, but the community as a whole, the ones who can't. As you've heard from our attorneys that we've hired, these, and these concerned citizens here speaking, there are gaping holes in this whole process and we've only scratched the surface. How can we know if this is a compatible use of land if we don't have all of the information? How can we know the impact on our land, our soil, and our water if more studies aren't done? Have stricter rules and regulations for these RV parks. We care about the groundwater and we, we, we hope you do too in a sustainable way and more studies should be done if you're even considering approving this. Mr. Burrow's family has already posted online that they plan on breaking the rules long-term for rentals, that they plan on having people live there. I ask you Commissioners, if Clint and Mr. Burrow are not being forced to comply with regulations on the application alone, who's going to hold them accountable with following the rules moving forward? Will it be Clint? Will it be you? We should not have to fight this, we should not have to take this to district court, we should not have to spend our hard-earned money to pay for attorneys. This is not cheap, but this is important to us and we will fight for it, but we shouldn't have to. We shouldn't have to take off of work, we shouldn't have to deny our responsibilities at our home and with our children to be here. I've spent so many hours on this subject. We're simply asking that you follow the rules and guidelines set forth. If you kick it back to Clint and Mr. Burrow, together they can turn in the required paperwork that's on your rules and regulations, but we'll be back here again. We'll be fighting this again. We ask that you follow your guidelines in Section six point eleven. Our neighborhood is not the proper place for an RV park. An approval, if you decide so, will be overturned in district court, we know that. These rules have not been met. This is not discretionary, it applies to everyone. Clint's aggressiveness to approve this in such haste and failure to comply with the rules is concerning to us. We're asking that you deny this now for good and let us move on with living our lives. We ask that you deny for being unsuitable under Rules and Regulations, Section six point eleven, as Mr. Matt Mills brought to your attention, and we also ask that you deny under the criteria of Rule four point four E that prohibits site development plans adversely affecting adjacent land use. Those are our two, right now that we're asking you to deny upon. Thank you for your time, thank you for caring and listening and hearing us all.
Let me speak first, I want to speak first. My name got so mentioned right there, I'm going to need a chance to rebut. Before me, since beginning of time, the beginning of development, the only regulations that have never been enforced are the ones that shouldn't be enforced because we don't have the right to enforce them. The RV park regs were stuck in there after the site development regs and they wouldn't broke out very good. Site development plan was put in there for site plans. The development plan regs were put in there by a Commissioner and another guy later. They should have been separated better. The stuff that they're asking in the site development plan should not be applied to a private property for a RV park on somebody's private property where there's no dedicated right-of-way, no public dedications. So it took a little common sense to do that. The stuff that we're not enforcing and nobody else has ever enforced, it's not that we're not applying the regs and I have not asked y'all to approve anything.
I've heard three arguments that I can definitely clear up. One of them is, I'd like to know how many people along that road are not ag exempt. If they are ag exempt, they're a farming community, not a residential community. Number two, there was a question about the width of the road or the right-of-way. How wide is the right-of-way? It's got a fifty-foot right-of-way. How wide is it between the fences? It was totaled in here, it was forty-seven foot. That means somebody's encroaching on county right-of-way. The other thing is water. I've got six water wells on my place and a windmill well. I have three wells that are irrigation wells with eight horse pumps that even on a drought year stand in a hundred foot of water. As far as the regulations go, I, all the regulations I knew about, I followed. If, if there's anything else, then, then I guess I'll, I'll take care of that too. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mills, come back over here to the hot seat here. You've heard all the arguments from the various people and what we said and had a chance, I hope, to read this letter from the attorney from Austin. What's clear to me is that whatever's happening here is not going to be the end of it. There's going to be a lawsuit filed, whoever loses here today or whoever wins here today is going to have a lawsuit and an injunction to probably prevent something from going on. What is your take on this, Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I agree. I, I really don't really want to be the decision maker. I mean, I just think if, I would say it is unique compared to the other RV parks I know of, the location and so on. If, I mean, it would, to me, the, the most important question is, does it meet the location requirements? I mean, I did hear one of the opponents of it say, we're not residential. Well, if it's not residential, I, I don't think that part is what you're going to hang your hat on. I think the, the question is going to be the public access and the question about public health, safety, general welfare. I don't really, I mean, I wouldn't hang my hat on, well, I think there might be crime brought. I mean, I, I don't think that's firm enough, but I mean, the, the public access aspect is, is maybe the best argument that this would hinge on if you wanted to, you know, vote against it under the location. I mean, I think that, to me, that should, I mean, I think that's enforceable. What do you think on, on that provision, Clint? That's about as, I mean, I don't think the road width, I mean, it's, it is narrow, it's narrower than the average county road. I mean, there's no doubt. I measured it, walked it off myself, but, but I don't think that with the, with the roads being accepted into the county system and the provision in the local government code about, you know, not imposing greater standards, I don't think the road thing is going to be a viable objection. I think it's going to be just this general, do you believe that it's contrary to public access and other features that may be harmful to public health, safety, general welfare? I mean, if, I mean, that's really your call, I would say, on that, on that line item, it comes down to that, I think. So.
It still comes down to the question, do we have a legal basis to deny Mr. Burrow's application? And I'm here in development saying that we do not.
Yeah, I mean, if anything, I, to me, that would be, that would be it. But he, I mean, he, he met what Clint put him through. In fact, I think a couple of provisions beyond what others have done, it's just...
If you deny, you'd have to ask the list of reason, he just decided that would be your reason.
Right, which is, which is not a reason that he can clean up in the next couple. I mean, if it's a problem with the location, the location is the location, so that's not a fixable thing. So I mean, he wouldn't be able to put in an RV park at that point.
That's not something I could comment on.
Okay. I, I got a comment. I know this is a difficult situation that we're in at the moment, a lot of vagueness with the way these regs are worded. And, but I tend to agree with Ms. Mercer that that's really not their problem. There are citizens out here who have a right to, to look at our regulations and rely on them. It's our problem to fix it. And I'll give you a case in point, and by the way, there's no other commercial, there's no other commercial stuff out there, anything that's non-residential that I see out there and I went out there and I did look at it with my own two eyes. But it's interesting to me that we, and please bear with me here, that we're taking a position on our off-site sewer systems, that we're reading the black letter of our permitting system, that we're not going to, after we have done some waivers on that, and yet on this, we're saying, we're not going to go by what our regs say. So I'm confused myself about it, but I believe that our regs say what they say. And at this, at this time, I think we're, I know we're in a quandary here, but again, when I say status quo, if we do something different than what we have right now, we're just opening up more can of worms, in my opinion. So I'm going to go ahead and jump out there and I'm going to move to deny the site development plan for Circle B RV Park because of failure to comply with our regs, development and compliance regs as written, six point one one, page sixty-five and page sixty-six, regarding A, public access and B, no entrance exit through a residential district. I think, I disagree with the county attorney on that, I think that that's in our regs and even though we haven't defined it, that's not their problem. So that's my motion.
Second.
Second.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Eagle to deny Circle B applications for RV parks.
Clint, you got anything else to say?
It was basically to Commissioner Eagle talking about comparing the RV regs to the sewer regs. Memorial Day weekend, I went through the RV regs after all this and I compared it to the statutes that were adopted in the development regulations to see, because before, when the building lines came up, and there are regulations in here, it says we have side building lines in the RV regs, which we don't have the right to do. Commissioner Andrews had asked List Served if we could do that, and they told him no. So it got me to dig in deeper. When we revise these RV regs, we're gonna lose half of them, because we don't have the right to do them. When we revise these RV regulations, we're gonna lose most of them, because we don't have the right to do them.
Those RV, those are our RV regs in green that he's showing us, that's what we have. He's saying that when we redo them, those are all illegal and they're not gonna be able to be included, is that what you're saying?
We don't have fire codes, we don't have building codes, we don't have the right to put side setbacks on there, we don't have the right to do landscaping, all that's coming out.
That's not relevant to today's motion, so.
I mean, that's...
We don't have, uh, a regulation that's designated that as a residential area there where Boswell Court is, am I right? It's never been designated a residential area. I think it is a residential area now, I mean, they got all these people that live in there, but it's not designated as a residential area. So to say that Mr. Burrows did not follow the regulations, there's not a residential area there that the county has, does the county have the, uh, your department have the right to, or the commissioner's court to designate an area or a residential area?
We have the right to create a new district through a public hearing and changing the regulations.
Well, I don't know.
That's a sixty day process.
That's a sixty day process to change that, I don't know, thanks? We have any other discussion? Have any other comment?
Can I say something, please?
Yes, ma'am, come up to the podium. What's your name?
I don't know a lot about regulations or government. Sorry?
State your name first, please.
Shirley Thrasher. But I do know people. We have a lot of elderly out there that have bought and their homes and paid, bought and paid for their homes and land. We have a lot of young people out there, we have children out there that go to school. As you know, in the United States, we're trying to protect our children. If we have an RV park out there, how do we know that the people coming in and out of that RV park aren't gonna harm our children, aren't gonna rape them, murder them, or shoot them, or whatever? That's, it, it's people that, that need to be here, heard here. We need to be heard and we need to be protected. Thank you.
I think the point of this regulation was to, to protect what you see as a residential area. This is a significant length of road that ends in a cul-de-sac. I think by every definition, this is, this is a residential area and that's what our regulations specifically say. Whether that's, uh, proper, we have the authority to do it, I guess that is, that is for sure in question at this point. But I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Eagle that, uh, we have those regulations written down and I think we need to uphold them.
If you're talking about zoning or regulations or anything like that, if we created a district, we'd have to create all kinds of, just like every one of our districts, we had to create special exceptions for every one of those, you know, densities. We'd basically be creating restrictions for that new district.
Sure agony for me, I'll tell you that, to try to follow something that's legal here, but anyway, a motion has been made, you've already had your time, ma'am, I'm sorry. Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Eagle, like I've stated, second by Commissioner Andrews to deny the permit for Mr., for the Circle B. Do you have anything else you wish to say before we call for the vote? Okay. So I call for both, all in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye. Aye.
Looks like the motion fails three to two. So like I said, this is not the end, it is just the beginning. And I hate it, but that's the way the law is, thank you. All right, let's move on to the...
Let's, uh, can I just, can you explain what's gonna happen with that vote? Does that mean that we, we voted to...
He voted to deny, so he's, Mr. Burrows...
But we didn't make a vote to approve, but what I hear, because we didn't deny, that means it is approved, is, I just want that for the record, what, what came out of this?
Is that right?
It'd be automatically approved, yeah.
So it will be automatically approved because we, we did not deny it? I just wanted to make sure that was clear on the record of what happened.
Voting to deny approved it.
Yeah.
Excuse me, voting against denial approved it. My bad.
Okay.
You know what I was thinking?
All right, financial, Ms. Kidd.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You've all received advanced documentation regarding invoices that have been presented today for payment. The amount is one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. The auditor's office has reviewed all these invoices and recommends payment.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures for May seventeenth through June seventh in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to pay the bills in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the miscellaneous, item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to approve county extension agent's request to remove a portion of the existing barrier wall and place a greenhouse in the Master Gardens Demonstration Garden that will extend into the existing parking lot up to seven feet.
I guess I'll speak on it.
All right.
Basically, there's a floodway back there and they were wanting to put a, the master gardeners were wanting to put the floodway and we moved and moved and moved. And we finally got it out of the floodway and then we were trying to get it out of the, we were meeting with the guy that was doing the contractor for their, constructing buildings. And then me and Kevin and then we're meeting out there and we got on this side of the wall, well, if we left the gap between the existing retaining wall, enough for him to get a lawnmower in there, it'd basically get onto the asphalt, which wouldn't get into the parking straps about seven feet, and that's being pretty conservative, so, and it would not require a floodplain development permit from the city of Granbury and it'd stay out of the floodplain, so.
It would stay out of the floodplain?
Yes. And they're gonna put a little curb along the edge of it to divert the wa, I mean, the water naturally flows right towards where the build's gonna go, so the curb would have to divert the water around it.
Will the greenhouse be anchored, you know, into the, you know, permanently?
I'd hope so, so.
Given the wind issues, I would think it would need necessary.
The city of Granbury has several greenhouses around, don't they? The, you didn't...
It would've been impossible to get it permitted back here in the floodway.
Who's, what budget is this coming out of? You wanna come up here and address this, London? I like what the master gardeners are doing, I know y'all do great work, y'all won all kind of awards through the state.
Yes, sir.
Everything else, y'all do great.
So this would come out of our budget directly, it would not come out of anything from y'all, it would be all master gardener funds, they still have to vote on it. This is just giving them permission to actually start moving forward and talking about what they can do.
Okay. So this, they don't have a greenhouse out there right now, do they?
No, sir.
So this is what y'all think y'all do need, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, okay, basically, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Second.
All right, a motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the county extension's request regarding the erection of a master of a greenhouse, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously five, nothing. Okay, item number two, consider and take appropriate action to award RFB twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-three Jailbread, this is with Bimbo?
Bo Bakery.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. The bids for Jail, uh, Jailbread RFB two-zero-two-two-dash-three were open June first at ten AM in the purchasing office. After examining the three qualified responses, it's the recommendation of purchasing and the sheriff's office to award the contract to Bimbo Bakery. Yes, sir.
Bimbo.
Okay, that was Mrs. Baird's previously, wasn't it?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to award the RFB two-zero-two-two-dash-double-zero-three Jailbread.
Second.
Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to award the Jailbread contract to Bimbo Bread, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next item is discuss and take appropriate action regarding the election administrator's overtime compensation. And at this time, we're gonna go into executive session, since this is a personnel matter. So I would like to adjourn here at ten twenty-five to go into executive session. Okay, at eighteen minutes till eleven, I'm calling, we're back in session at the commissioner's court. And I'll announce that no action was taken regarding the election administrator's overtime compensation, it's been resolved and, um, with explanation by the election administrator. So, item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to allow Adventist Risk Management to utilize the JP two courtroom on July eighth, tenth, and eleventh. Is anybody here to speak to that? I know that it's put on the docket by me because somebody called my office about somebody contacting that. Mr. Mills, you're back on the hot seat again, did you talk to, I think it was Judge Castillo, about these people that wanted to use the courtroom?
No, no, sir.
You did not?
No, I don't know anything about that.
Did anybody else do that?
Judge Howell is just in here, he might, Judge Howell. Just standing out there in the hall telling a bad joke.
You know, you know, we have a situation about, that we were talking back, I think my second year in office here before, I guess Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Wilson were here about people leasing spaces where they wanted to, people were, different groups are trying to lease libraries and speaking libraries and some of the groups are not of the type of, were very controversial groups and we wanted to, um, check the credentials and have, uh, make sure that everybody had, uh, didn't have any kind of criminal backgrounds that could harm children or anything of that nature. And if we open it up to this group, uh, as I understand it, they're willing to pay, has anybody ever leased a courtroom? It hasn't been since I've been here, we've had certain county groups use courtrooms, but to my knowledge, we've never leased a courtroom. Mr. Mills, have we ever leased a courtroom to any outside group? And charged them for it, 'cause I know you cannot allow county government equipment and buildings and stuff to be, uh, given without value, taken for that, um...
Well, I mean, we've rented tons of rooms, we've rented the gazebo for the Bible reading marathon, we've rented, uh, the annex for all kinds of meetings and political, non-political, you name it, right? I don't think so either. I mean, if they, I don't know anything about this topic, but I mean, if they filled out the forms and whatever like anybody else, I mean, if it's not being utilized, I guess they could, right?
Well, there's only one caveat, is one of the days they're asking for is a Sunday.
Yeah, and that, I remember Judge, it came up and I forget the group, but there was some group who wanted to rent the second floor of the courthouse for some, I don't know, Bible study or something, but it was gonna be in the evenings and that means we gotta come let people in, we gotta have possible janitor service, there's all these problems that go with that, cost-wise. But if, I mean, if it was during the day and the courtroom wasn't in use, then, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I just don't like doing it after hours when we gotta have personnel come in.
Well, they're asking for a Friday, Sunday, and a Monday, is what's in their letter.
Yeah, well...
Jenny's Wine Gardeners, is he?
Yeah, well, it certainly wouldn't be a Saturday, I mean, that'd be no bueno, right?
Judge Howell, did you talk to these people, I know it was...
All right, I just, I thought you were standing right there, this isn't even your courtroom, but I'm just, you know...
Well, you said it's a JP two courtroom, so, you know...
No, I'm just kidding, yes, they, they've come and asked us about using the courtroom and I, and as far as I know, we've cleared the calendar and told them they could use it.
That means that you will clean up if there's anything up there and you will protect.
I told them, I told them if it, if it's not in the, in as good, if not better, shape when they leave there than it was when they got there, that there will be repercussions. No, they did come and ask about it and, and, and as far, as far as I know, we've cleared the calendar so that it can be used. No, they did come and ask about it, and, and, and as far, as far as I know, we've cleared the calendar, so that it can be used.
What is the Adventist, uh, Risk Management? Who are they? You know? Advent, Adventist?
I have... Commissioner Cotton, I am gonna have to, I'm gonna have to
A Google search.
Claim that, that I am, I have slept since they came in and asked me about it.
A Google search said that they do, uh, like, risk management for Seventh-day Adventist groups, so.
Right.
It's kind of, an insurance seminar, I mean, you know.
Right, it was something like that. They want, they, they wanted a courtroom setting to, they're doing some sort of filming. Yeah, and they, they said that this James Wine Gardner is well-known, used to be from around here, and has got a great reputation. And that's who's in charge of it, so.
Right.
So if we never charged anybody, and they're gonna, i- is there somebody here to let them in on a Sunday?
Well, Ryan was the one that asked for it, the district attorney asked for it, so I assume he's gonna be in care of all of that.
Ryan, right, thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
When we do things out at the courthouse, we, we require insurance, don't we? People to be insured, or do we need to do that?
Uh, the district attorney has assured me that everything, it's all coming back now. The di, the district attorney has, has told me that he's gonna, he, he's gonna be here the entire time that they're here, and he's, he's gonna be responsible for all and anything that goes on.
And when I see him all saying that you represented that if anything is damaged, it will come out of his budget.
There you go, exactly, exactly.
Okay, well, with that then, I, do I hear a motion, and based upon all of this discussion here?
I'll, I'll make a motion to allow the Adventist Risk Management to utilize JP2 courtroom, and JP1 courtroom, on July 8th, 10th, and 11th.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motions been made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the Adventist Risk Management to utilize the JP2 courtroom on July the 8th, 10th, and 11th, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, next, number five, discuss and take appropriate action to approve a temporary information technology part-time employee. Mr. Owens.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Basically, we're seeking your approval so that we can hire a temporary part-time employee, since we will be losing Cameron next month, about July 8th or so. And essentially, this employee is going to be his replacement. We wanna bring him in early, so that that way we can have proper succession and a proper handoff of knowledge, so that that way, you know, we're not going back too far by hiring somebody who's brand-new to our environment. So we're just trying to do our best to make sure that all that knowledge is passed on, and we can keep rolling as we always have.
Is that, they got enough in their budget to cover the extra time for this new employee? No?
So on the, was it on the consent agenda to do the transfer? Well, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a budget transfer for the IT. I think.
I think.
$7,000, increase part-time, decrease infrastructure supplies.
Kind of work?
Sounds like you got it.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, this is only gonna be just for a couple of weeks. So Cameron's last day is July 8th, so it won't go any longer than that.
Okay. Well, I think that's a, that's a good idea to have that, so. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, take appropriate action to approve a temporary information technology part-time employee.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the temporary information technology part-time employee, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application, approving the application allowing use of the square parking lot for the Chamber of Commerce annual old-fashioned Fourth of July event contingent upon proof of insurance. Well, this has been going on since the beginning of time, probably the biggest event in Hood County. There would be people with pitchforks and torches coming after us, we didn't approve that. I make a motion that we approve or authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application contingent upon proof of insurance.
Seconding that.
Seconded by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Number seven, discuss and consider for approval a food allowance not to exceed $4,500 as Hood County's contribution to the Texas 21 U.S. 377 corridor correlation meeting on July the 29th of 2022. Let me explain what that is. The City of Granbury and the city of, and the county of Hood are promoting this 377 Texas 21 coalition. There should be around 150 cities and counties coming up here. They asked if we would contribute something like the food, and I said, yes, what amount? They said they didn't know yet. They thinking it's gonna be around $2,000, but depending upon how many people or cities and counties show up. But I, it's really important for us, for Granbury and Hood County, to be kind of the, we're the midway point to really take the lead in this and work with all these politicians, both Republican and Democrats, to try to get some money. And I think it looks good for us to, to do that. So, Ms. Kidd, do we have some money that we could pay up to $4,500 from some kind of fund up here? I'm hoping it's a lot less, but...
I'll find the money.
You find the money?
I'll find the invoice.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll get that, but that's not until July 29th, but they wanted to make sure that we could get the money. So I move that, I make the motion that we approve a food allowance for the Texas 21 U.S. 377 corridor correlation meeting for all the cities and counties that are meeting at the Granbury Convention Center on July 29th, 2022, not to exceed $4,500. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Item, last item, convene into executive session pursuant to 55.071 and 55.1072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss consultation with counsel on possible land purchase negotiation located in Precinct 1. Then reconvene into public meeting to discuss and take possible action to pursue the negotiation and purchase of such land, including but not limited to a discretionary exemption for Realtor services. Okay, so at this time, which is four minutes to 11, we're gonna convene again into executive session. All right, we had an executive session, that's all we can announce, since it concerns with real estate. And so that ends it, so at 11:15, the meeting is adjourned.